Welcome to the September eighth, twenty twenty five, public work session at the Cornwall Lebanon School District. We are nine members strong and one is not with us, but we have eight, I'm sorry, eight members strong, one missing. Rook there?
Yeah, I'm sure.
I remind our board members and our viewing guests that we are conducting this public meeting in person on live streaming. So you can critique the actions from the L G I in Cedar Crest High School. The link to view this live streaming meeting is located in the school board meeting page of this C L S D website. I ask you please to rise with me to be a pleasure to meet you soon. Since this being a work session, I'm going to turn this meeting over to Dr. Max.
Thank you, Mr. Zug, and welcome and good evening to everyone in attendance and for anyone who may be joining us online. As this is a public work session, as Mr. Zug had shared, the administration will be presenting items to the Board of School Directors for review, consideration, and discussion. Some of these are items that we may be voting on next week at our regular board meeting. At the conclusion of the meeting, there will be an opportunity for anyone in attendance to ask questions about any of the items that are discussed this evening. Before we begin with our first section, Buildings and Grounds, I have a few comments and updates to share. First off, thank you to all of our, all of our staff, all of our. Not at the moment. Just a couple of things, we had a, we had a very successful start to the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. You know, when I think about all the efforts that our, our teachers, our staff, administrators, all of our district staff would, to make this a successful opening, it's just impressive. And everything going on here on the campus could not have been as smooth or anything, everything we have done on, so I'm very, very pleased by that. And we have full day kindergarten going on at the elementary school. So we've got, we've got transportation going on with that, all the logistics of transportation, lunches, breakfast, all the things that have to happen to make that happen. All very successful starts this year. So this Thursday, September eleventh is Patriot Day, and all district schools will have a moment of silence and remembrance of the events of that day in two thousand and one. On this, on Wednesday, actually, this will be next week, on the seventeenth, we have our Fall Title One Turn Family Engagement Night. This will be a unique now at elementary school. And we also have our post-secondary planning night at Cedar Crest High School on the seventeenth as well. Our next meeting, as I mentioned, is here next Monday, and it will also be live streaming. We are going to talk about a number of things tonight. These include the renovations to the high school, the stadium facility improvements project, we've got some change orders, updates, building risk insurance. We also have some approving of the facilities that'll take place for activities. We are going to have our Buildings and Grounds semi-annual report. We have a number of personnel actions here as we just conclude some of the hiring to start this year. And we are also going to talk about the traffic patterns at Cornwall Elementary School. So we will now move on to the discussion items on our agenda, and Buildings and Grounds is the first section. So we will begin with some of the change orders.
Contractor E C I has just a few, um, one of them's the unused.
Construction management company to make sure that these are all within what would be an appropriate charge for these things. So that's why we have these on here for approval.
And Mr. Brickley will be doing a report a little later, and he's more intimately involved in the everyday situation. So he might be able to add a little bit of details to some of those pictures. Um, the next item is our stadium project.
Yeah, this is a big one here, but if you drove by the stadium this summer and you saw this enormous pile of rock, you understand why this is what it is.
Yeah, if you remember last month, I did give you a heads up that this was coming. We had to make sure that we were looking at all the information to be able to present to you. So it's a little less than a hundred thousand for the unsuitable soils. And then we'll ask for your approval next week on that. I believe we have a couple of pictures on the stadium. This is before the footers, the rebar, and then the next picture is the footers poured. It's coming together, you're starting to be able to see the actual structure of the concession stand and bathrooms.
Now, we had a couple of large events at the stadium this past weekend, uh, with a home football game, as well as band competition on Saturday. And yes, there had to be some creativity with some food trucks. We had to have portable restroom facilities in, but I think people understand that we're working through this. And you know, the end result of this obviously is going to be very beneficial for the future. It's just going to take a little while to get there. Uh, we're already looking ahead to the spring to see if there's going to be impact on spring sports and activities. When we look here in the winter time, once the football season, the fall sports are done, that's when a lot of the major work here at the stadium will commence further with the removal of the bleachers, the demolition of the music aid stand, as well as then all of the underground work that has to occur to make those things happen. A lot of electrical work too, there's a lot of trenching that has to occur with the new electrical, uh, running the conduit lines around. But again, had a little bit of a delay because of this, but they've already made up some of the time because of the unsuitable soils. So, so we're optimistic that this job can continue to stay on schedule.
Okay.
Um, question about the unsuitable soils, um, is it just that it was rocky? Or is it, um, was there something otherwise wrong with the soil?
Test, test. Do you want to answer that?
Sure, it was both.
Yeah, there was large boulders in it, and it was also a clay material that could not be compacted. So they do compaction tests on, onsite, so that they can pour the footers in. It would not meet the, the quality and the codes that needed to put the footers on top. So it was about eleven hundred cubic yards of soil that we ended up removing and bringing.
A replacement with stone and with.
Two A stone back in, about eight feet wide, ten to eleven feet deep underneath the, uh, the footers, so.
I have a quick question on the radon thing, the discovery of an existing system. So we had to pay out, it's a, it's a minimal amount. So they could work around that, and they're purchasing new pipes and stuff like that?
Want to answer that?
That's all that was?
Uh, we, we didn't know that was there, so that's one of those items, they opened a wall and they're like, you know, you have a radon system? And no one knew that we had a radon system. Um, so they, they didn't see a reason to have it on a one level building, one story building. There was no basement below it, so they're, they're removing the old pipes that they didn't feel should be underneath the, the floor when they repoured the floors.
Good, okay, good, thank you very much, I wondered about that.
Okay, um, follow-up question about the unsuitable soils. Um, did, did they know that there was unsuitable soils and just not know the extent? Or did they not know that?
They did not know, yeah.
They did not know, and I don't believe that until, until the excavation continued, they didn't realize how significant it was.
Yeah, so that's, that's the guess right now is that when they leveled the football field, that they pushed all the soil off the top of the football field to the, both corners of the field, uh, where the concession stand is and on the opposite corner, close to the warehouse where we're putting the, the runway for the pole vault. Cause all the stone was loose, it was big boulders, but there was no, no shelving of it, which is typical for this area with limestone, so. But it was beautiful stone, and we're gonna, we're gonna recycle some of it.
We are going to reuse some of that stone, yes.
Yeah. We had, we had landscapers stopping in because they wanted to get some of it, because it's, it's perfect, perfect cubic shaped stone. So we're going to recycle some of it, we hope.
Any other questions about the stadium or the high school before Mr. Brickley goes on with his semi-annual report? And some of us will be, we touching on that, but just if there are any other questions, we can, we can take. Okay, go ahead.
All right, uh, thanks for having me for the semi-annual report. As we were talking, it's all things construction right now. Um, we didn't feel that was enough, so we wanted to take on some more projects at our elementary schools this summer to keep them fresh and, and running. So Cornwall Elementary, I'll start at Cornwall. I can happily say that with the completion of this roofing project, all of our elementary schools have a warranty on their rubber roof as of now. So that, that was, that's great news, uh, recovered, we're good for at least six months till South Lebanon's runs out, but we're good for now. So, uh, next picture. We did, did finish the pressure washing at Cornwall, we did half of it last summer, half of it this past summer. Uh, you can see the results, um, great improvement, try to get on a schedule to do that every couple of years around the district. Ebenezer, uh, you've probably seen these pictures before, we went from what's on the left to what's on the right, the old water boiler and, and six hundred gallon hot water tank to a redundant three, um, water boiler system. Uh, we also finished up the chiller at Union Canal, that was a punchless item for this summer, it was installed over, over the winter. We fired that up in, in May of this past year, had a few hiccups, a few things that need to be adjusted, but it's running smooth and, and very well right now. So we're happy with that, preparing for the chiller at Cornwall to be installed this coming winter. Uh, also Ebenezer, this was kind of a trial, uh, we're doing a, a glass small learning lab, uh, in each of the pods. If you remember, we just finished doing all the flooring in the pods at Ebenezer. Greg needed some space for, for small meetings and small learning areas, so we took one pod and, and enclosed the, the end of it. Turned out very well, so we're, we're calling this one of four, and we'd like to continue doing this in the other pods as, uh, the future comes. Also, uh, not shown at, at Ebenezer, we did replace all the rigging that, that failed the inspection for the, the stage inspection. So we started at Ebenezer, uh, then moved to South Lebanon, you can see here, those are new curtains at South Lebanon. There's your curtains, all right, outside curtains and the, and the curtains behind. Not quite, but we had to, we had to pass the flame test, which is important. Uh, we also finished the, the carpeting in the pod, so this is the four or five pod. So all the pods are completed at, at South Lebanon, as you can see, we're, we're moving more, more towards tile and getting away from the carpet. Uh, several reasons for that, easier to clean, longevity, elementary schools where kids are eating breakfast in classrooms now, um, tend to stain and, and requires a lot of maintenance, and they're, they're not looking great. So we're happy to, to move to the tile. Union Canal, gym floor was resurfaced, the old gym floor on the, on the left, the new gym floor on the right. So they basically put four coats of resin over top of the old gym floor where it was, it was splitting and cracking. Uh, project turned out very, very nice, they did a good job, took about a week, at the, the first week of August, they completed that job. Also installed a fence at Union Canal, Myerstown Shed and Fencing did this job for us. Uh, we wanted some separation between that parking lot and the playground, they, they're awful close, so, uh, we chose to start with the fence, and it turned out very nice. And then also at Union Canal, that's not pictured, is we, uh, in-house, we re-roofed the pavilion that's on the backside of the, of the property. Uh, it was a shingle roof, we went to a blue metal roof to match the roofs around the district, uh, that was done by our district maintenance. So that turned out very nice as well. All right, on to the high school and the connector, so most of our, our focus this summer, uh, was finishing up the connector. You can see some pictures there, uh, top left was the day we hung the flag, that was a proud moment, we got the flag up in the air. Uh, landscaping was planted, which turned out very nice. Uh, we still are waiting for the fence, and we do not have an arrival date for the fence to come in and then get installed. So you, between the pillars, we have a black fence going from the high school connecting to the connector with the gate over top of the sidewalk that's in the lower part of that picture. And then also along the top back of the amphitheater, there is a fence that gets installed. So on the top level of that amphitheater, there will be a fence, then that way that makes it A D A compliant, wheelchairs can roll up to that fence and not have to worry about coming down over the edge, so.
So we're waiting on that right now, because that's not completed, we cannot have students using that area right now, as soon as that is completed. We know a lot of teachers have already asked about that, which is a great, it's a great learning space, nice break area as well. So we're hopeful that can get done quickly so we can use that.
Yep, and that's, that's landscape by Dan right there, so.
Did a nice job.
Nice job.
If you don't like it, don't tell me. Uh, and that's the typical classroom with the new furniture we got, the, the whiteboards, uh, Jason has the, the touchscreen monitors on, on carts. Um, and that's what we're shooting for, for the high school as well, that kind of design. And, um, you see the color, colors that we used as well for the school colors, so everyone's very happy. I think the hardest part is going to move the teachers back into the high school after they spent time in the connector with the windows. So we started the day after graduation, you notice that guy down there in the, the bottom right, right after heart attack, he's there at five thirty in the morning with, with forty of the other staff members. Uh, we met in the auditorium, day after graduation, the Monday following graduation, we went to work. In two days, we moved thirty-three classrooms, donated a hundred and sixty or so desks to, uh, local Christian schools, uh, filled six or seven dumpsters, filled the connector, uh, got out of the way for construction to start. There was not one complaint from the forty staff members, we pulled custodians and maintenance from all buildings in the district. They all worked great together, we divided into small, small groups, we had plenty of carts, we provided lunch. Uh, Dr. Phil was there, I was there, some of the other administration was helping out. Uh, it was a great day, it was, it was very nice to see how people came together to, to do this. Next, next day is Christmas, so if anyone's not busy Christmas, we have twenty-two classrooms to move back into the high school and another eighteen to go back to the connector and some more movement there as well, and a library to refill, so.
Not necessarily Christmas Day, but over that.
Well, I'll be at Christmas Day.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to ask people to do that, we'll, we'll find some other days over the break where we'll do that, so.
All right, next, uh, so you, you saw some of these pictures, this is, uh, the old yearbook classroom, Mr. Gates's room, which is now going to be a bathroom. So that's where we started on the left. They, they demoed the floor, ran pipes for the, for the new bathroom that's going to be going in, you go to the next picture there, Dr. Murray. Um, again, from left to right, filled, backfilled with stone, put their barrier on it and then poured the floor. So currently they are running the walls up with block and doing the plumbing in that area. So that will become, uh, his entire classroom will be gang bathrooms, boys, girls, a faculty bathroom, a water room for the fire system, a pump room, and then a storage closet behind it, close to where that window is on the, on the left-hand side.
If you remember, the reason that we're doing this now is because we need to always have facilities for all the people in the building. So the existing ones, this is just up from the cafeteria, this is right next to that, that area will then become a classroom at a later time. And when this is opened up and this is operational, so that's why it all has to very carefully work in steps and in phases.
Correct, yep, so this will give us bathrooms back by that cafeteria at all times. All right, next, uh, this is some of what we were dealing with this summer, we had excavators, I don't know, four or five in the building at one time. Uh, two and three hundred hallways, we're, we're excavated, replacing pipes, actually adding pipes where there were no pipes. You can see this pit, it's about ten feet deep, where we. You can see this pit, it's about 10 feet deep where we lined pipes. So we had every 100 to 200 feet, we had a pit like this in our hallways. They completed half of the lining, basically the, the west half of the building was done. It was, it was a lot. They did a good job. They worked 12, 14 hour days, seven days a week, all summer long. They got it complete, they got it backfilled, we got it concreted in order to open up for school. So my hat goes off to, to Reynolds and the team that they had. All the other contractors kinda gave way to let the plumber do his job so we could, we could open school on time. So this was a huge undertaking. Next summer, we have another, another half of the building to do where we're gonna replace the plumbing going out of the front of the building next to the main office. We have lining of the, around the auditorium. We have the, the pipe between the gym and the pool down the flag hallway being replaced. So we have a lot of work ahead of us for next summer as well, but if it goes as well this summer, we'll be happy. We were getting a little nervous, getting towards the end, but they pulled through and got it done, so, so hats off to them. Next picture. Here's another project, you may have seen this picture. This is one of the old IU rooms that's being transformed into a science lab. So, obviously there was only a sink on the wall in those rooms, so now we're running gas, water, drainage underneath the slab to create lab tables. So each on the right hand side there where you see the, the pipes coming up, that's where a lab table will be. And we'll do the same thing in phase two when we get into the science wing. So, I think we created three or four labs in phase one that, that were not science labs, and then we're redoing all the other science labs in, in phase two. So that, that will be the same process. Big undertaking for inside. And here's the, the famous summer, summertime sinkhole. So this opened up, I would say mid-June, starting on the left, that's what we saw. Came in excavated, trying to find the throat. Throat went in two different directions. Ended up, I don't know what the, what the measurement was. We ended up using I think nine, nine cement trucks to bring it about not halfway back up before they topped it off with soil. And if you go to the next picture there, Jason, that was very important because that's where the pad is for the new, the new mechanic room. That you saw earlier in the picture, that houses electrical, water and fire in that, that room, the, the fire pumps for this new sprinkler system. So you can kinda see that little black spatch on the wall, that's where the sinkhole was, but that is not a sinkhole. That is just the weatherproofing on the outside wall of the footer. So, that was exciting. Slowed Iron Eagle down a little bit, but not too much. They, they worked well together. Took about three weeks from start to finish with all the, all the testing that had to be done. On the left is the new electric running out to Falcon Drive, going around the boiler room and down the driveway next to the tennis courts. You saw the pictures of the boiler pads being poured, so this is kinda start to, to finish. Old boilers coming out, pads being formed, pads are, are now poured and they're installing the new boilers. I was told that the new chillers have arrived, so that'll occur this winter. So the goal is to have these boilers installed and operational by mid-October, and then they'll start on the chillers right after that. Stadium, this is a picture of what they excavated. I don't know, Jason, you can zoom in on that a little bit and see, see what was under the ground and why they could not build on that. Just was not sturdy. So, about eight feet of excavation overall, average eight feet, someplace a little shower, someplace a little deeper. Backfilled with, with two waystone, put a landscape fabric over that and then, then poured the footers on top of that. So, they made up I think three of the four weeks so far that they lost. We're verifying amounts for change orders with Steckbeck Engineering, Fidavia, Earth Engineering, who was the geological engineering company on site for this, this project. So, everything's being vetted and looked at three different ways, so. And, and CI's been very good to work with out on that project. They made up three weeks in, in this short amount of time. They're working hard. The next target date for the stadium will be the Monday following the last football game, which is there about October 24th, 26th, when we clear out the fieldhouse and they start construction on the, on the south end of the stadium. So this north end will finish sometime over winter. The goal is to have the north end open for spring sports while the south end is being completed and the target date for that is July or so. Bleachers will occur over the winter as well, finishing sometime in March. So we're, we're replacing the home side bleachers. Scoreboard lights, things like that will be started as soon as football season ends. So, I believe that's my last slide. Is there any questions?
I have a question. Have we considered using the boulders for like any like safety pieces, like even with the fence that you, that we built at Union Canal, putting boulders there or?
Yeah, so we're, we're planning on using these boulders out at the stadium to replace old wooden railroad ties that we have that are decayed and falling. So they, they saved us a bunch of nicely shaped, we're in negotiations over price and what that's gonna cost to do. So, we're looking to build a retaining wall that is sturdy to hold the, basically hold the track up on the north end. It's, it's super steep out there and we have, we have wooden railroad ties holding all that weight back, so we're gonna build a retaining wall with those, with those boulders that are shaped correctly.
If you go around the side of the stadium, you'll see what Mr. Brickley's talking about. And that, yeah, that would be replaced with the boulders, so some of them were safe for that. Some of them, quite frankly, we just had to get them out of here so that we could continue with.
Yeah, there were a lot that were flat.
Cause there was, there was a lot here. We just need to be.
Wouldn't have any value.
I can see every name.
Yeah, the nice ones, the nice ones we kept, so.
Yep.
Did you, was the small learning space at Ebenezer, was that done in-house?
Uh, no, we had a.
Okay, good. No, not, not good, but.
We have a company out there by Ebenezer, Alumaglass, Alumaglass did it for us.
Yeah, good.
So, we've argued a little bit on that. We, we're gonna change the design just a hair for next year when we do it. We have a door opening, we, we didn't think about, but the door opens in, we'd rather it open out into the open instead of into the smaller space. So we're gonna flip that door around next summer and the new pod will open out, but it turned out very well.
It did, and you, you have so much, you already do so much in-house with our guys and they do so much.
Yeah, we're not, we really don't have any qualified to do that.
Right, perfect.
Aluminum framing and glasswork in-house, so.
That, then.
And it was, it was very reasonably priced.
Good. And my question over the weekend, several people asked me about the swimming pool. Is it going to be open ever?
So, so we had to drain, that's a great question. We had to drain the swimming pool for the summer because of the plumbing that was replaced behind the hallway that the pool is. All the, all the wastewater from the pool when we backflushed the filters goes into the pipe they had to replace. So the pool had to be shut for the summer. So it sat all summer empty. We refilled it and turned the pump on and the pump was seized. So we had to, we had an option of replacing it for $10,000 or rebuilding it for half of that. The pump and all the plumbing gets replaced in phase five or six. So we chose the option of rebuilding. We have the, the parts for the, the motor and we're waiting for the new impeller to arrive, which should be this week, knock on wood. So hopefully by next week, we can start treating the water and getting it open again.
I'll pass the word along. That's, that's an excellent plan, thank you.
We're hopeful, our, our goal is to have the water going through the pipes by next week.
Excellent.
That's all depending on the shipping, so.
And those are some of the unforeseen things that are gonna happen amidst, amidst all of this. Other questions? Obviously a lot happening here, and you know what I'm, what I'm very proud of is the fact that amidst all of this, we have school going on. We're still doing school, we're still functioning as normal, we're still having all of our activities for students, all the learning that takes place on a day-to-day basis, so I appreciate everyone's involvement in making sure that that's the case, so. Thank you, Mr. Brickley.
Thank you.
The, the next item that I have up here is Cornwall Elementary School and dismissal traffic patterns. So, you know, the location of Cornwall Elementary School, we talked about, Mr. Brickley talked about the pressure washing of the brick and how nice that looked, and I was thinking that well, we need to make sure it looks that nice in 2027. Does anyone know why?
It's building.
It'll be, it'll be 100 years old. So 100 years ago, when that school building was built, I think it's safe to say we had a little less traffic in Cornwall and in the surrounding areas that we have to contend with today. Just, just a guess, I don't have any traffic studies to prove that, but I think that's a pretty safe bet to say that that's the case. And we know that with the number of the developments and the amount of traffic that goes through that area, this has continued to be a challenge. Particularly back during 2020, during COVID and then our return to school, we had a lot of riders come in. At one point, traffic used to enter the school off Freeman Drive on 419 and come in over towards the cafeteria for pickup and for drop-off in the morning and for pickup. We had to stop that back in 2020 because, well, what was happening was traffic was backing all the way up towards 72. So that's where, you know, working with the department down there at the time, talked with them and we moved the traffic over to Alden Street and we did that. Well, even since 2020, there's now more traffic that comes through here that continues to compound this. Even though we have less drivers, there are now a lot more people back on the road, less people working from home, all those kinda things that happened in those early years of, of COVID, so that we were dealing with. So when you look at this right here, if you look in the upper right, the, the yellowish one that's on there, yellow-green, that, that is actually with the green on top, that's the bus loop. That's where our buses come into the front of the school and then they exit going out of there. So what we have told parents is that buses or parents are not to come down that way. They would go down 419 if they're coming in that direction. And then they would proceed over towards Alden Street to that intersection and they would come down there where the red is. If you look to the right of that where that is marked in orange, that is where Cornwall Borough has put down gravel and stone so that vehicles can then pull off to the side of the road while they are waiting for parent pickup. They would then proceed to follow the green lines and come into the front of the school and then exit back out onto 419. Now that exit, that entrance there in the front of the school and that gate and that little pathway around the Cornwall on the side there, that's something that we did back in 2021, somewhere around that timeframe. And that, it worked okay. It's kinda tight, you know? I think we do have one time where the building got clipped a little, but you know, other than that, it's, it's been working pretty well. The challenge of course is that with more traffic at Cornwall coming there from under the bridge, under the rail trail, and then also moving onto Berg Coleman, it backs things up there and that's a concern that exists. So what we're doing right now is we're asking parents to follow that traffic pattern, to wait over on Alden Street, and then so many cars will be released at a time, six cars or so at a time, released to go across there and then wait a minute or so, then another six cars released to go across there. And they need to just pull up gradually. And that can work generally if there's direction to have enough people there to do that coordination. Of course, that's the challenge as well as manning, manning this not just with our police but also with Cornwall Borough Police. We've had a lot of cooperation with them over the last couple of weeks. We appreciate that, but it's, it's a challenge. And then if you have a parent that's, or grandparent that's never picked up their kid before, they're like, what, what do I do here? And those kinda circumstances that happen. So, you, one of the days I was down there and, and just in a, in a conversation, someone suggested about using something of the, the path that we have that walk that goes around the field down there. And so I walked over there with Mr. Arts after dismissal concluded, we started talking about ideas that we could see to make this work. And that's where we came up with this idea, which we've since had Steckbeck Engineering look into, which is that rather than using that red pathway down off of Alden Street, is that we would go back to having the traffic come in off of 419, like we did not so long ago, right? But instead of having it come in over towards the parking lot, we would have it come into that gravel lot and open up the end of that gravel lot, which connects to the walking path there, widen the walking path enough and pave it such that it goes around that entire field and then connect to the existing path. So we'd keep traffic off of Berg Coleman, would separate our bus traffic with our car traffic, and also would, the distance of that, if you're completely on there, is over 1,400 feet. So, we believe that we could get 65 to 70 vehicles in that area off of the road, which we feel is a more long-term solution for what we're doing there. We still can't have people even, you know, that means that if, if there really are that many vehicles there that early, you can't get there early and line up. And you can't come on to the, into that area until probably after 3:30 when our recess would be concluded. So this is what we're proposing here, and we have some rough estimates on what this would cost. And what we're looking to do is to request from the board to approve. Steckbeck Engineering is the design team for this, because they've already done a lot of the work. This is pretty well set to go. We would have two bids, we'd have a base bid probably plus an alternate. The base bid would be to pave the path going around, the alternate would be to pave the gravel lot up there as well, which, you know, assuming the prices are reasonable, it would make sense to do that at the same time. The biggest challenge with this is, is timing, that this has to be done before the winter, while they're still making asphalt, we can get this work done. And we have a timeframe, of course, we have to go out to bid for a few weeks and do this. So, what we're proposing for next week is to have a motion on to go out to bid, do so then immediately as soon as Steckbeck can have the documents prepared. And then we would obviously, you know, lowest bidder, we would award them and then try to get this done here as soon as possible. So that's the plan. That's the best idea we've got with, with Cornwall, with traffic down there because it's, as you know, it's a tight place with a lot of traffic that is only going to increase. So comments, questions, thoughts?
I just have a question about the 419 traffic. So, people that are exiting out of there, is there gonna be like traffic control or something there to help because I can just see that kinda being a bit of a mess if you're trying to turn left out of there and there's cars coming in that direction.
They can only go right.
So. They can only go right.
That's, that's interesting. We, we don't restrict that currently, but tech, but, but actually that's what they're currently doing right now.
Yeah.
So they're currently exiting out that now. I think why it works is because it's not, it's not all just a whole lot of cars, there's one, then you know, group getting a car, it's more, it's more gradual than that. And you've got a little bit of lead time just as they come around the side of the parking lot there. So that has not been an issue with the exiting onto 419 currently. You know, if it is, you're right, we could do that where, you know, we direct traffic to the right if it would become an issue. Obviously that's the easier way to exit, but it hasn't been an issue as of.
And there's still traffic entering from 419?
The traffic would be coming down from 419, yes.
Okay.
Well, no, there's not currently, there would be, we used to do that off of 419 and we would go back to it. The only difference is the traffic would be entering at a different location. It used to enter and exit at the same location there.
That's right.
If you remember back, if, if somebody had children that attended Cornwall Elementary a number of years ago, you'd enter there, you'd go around the loop and you'd do that. And then we expanded the loop over into the parking lot. That was our first step, right, to get more cars. And then after, during COVID is when we moved it over to Alden Street.
Okay.
So here what we're doing is in essence, we're still going, we're still keeping traffic coming in off of 419 and leaving on 419. We're just making a much bigger loop than what we ever used to have way back when.
Yeah, if it worked before, then it should be fine.
It did, it did. And this, actually this should work, because we have more places for vehicles to go, it should work better. Thoughts, comments, questions? Okay. So we will have a motion on then, next week. I believe, we expect to have that and then as we get the documents prepared to get those out to bid, we'll have a motion on authorizing us to go out to bid and then we'll do that as quickly as possible, get that out there. And the time is, is really the key here.
I'm planning on using the capital reserve fund to fund this project.
I can't let this go without saying thank you. That's been a big concern.
I know, and I, and I don't think it's a, I think Cornwall Borough has, you know, they've been, obviously been working with us, we've tried to work cooperatively with them and with the police there. It's just a situation that it's, it's not anyone's fault, it's just a fact that, like I said, there's just a lot more traffic and things are very different than they were 10 years ago or 20 years ago and certainly 100 years ago. So, so we need to figure out ways to, to adapt to this. Mr. Snyder, it's gonna get worse, so we might as we, we might as well look to come up with a solution that's, that's gonna do that, yeah. So. And I know that some of you have had a lot of, you know, contact, Mr. Snyder and others and just input into this as well, so thank you for that. Okay, that's what we'll do. We'll have that on, this will be the board action, authorize a bid and hire Steckbeck Engineering for the project, and we'll keep that moving. Okay, all right. The community relations curriculum, were there any questions on buildings and grounds? That was one of our, one of our longest sections tonight, actually. But were there any questions about any of the buildings and grounds items that we had? Okay. Some of these sections are shorter this month, they'll be longer next month, but community relations curriculum and staff development is one of those. And we have one item here. Dr. Bosman.
Okay, good evening. Right now, we are in year two of a three-year agreement with First Aid Safety Patrol to provide our EMT program at the high school, but annually, we approve the instructors who are part of the program. So the attachment contains the names of the two instructors, Steven Zimmerman, who's the lead instructor, but he will be occasionally assisted by David Kirchner. So there are the two folks who will be the instructors for the EMT program at the high school. We would be looking to approve that next week.
Something we do routinely every year to hire assistant instructors. Next item that we have is extracurricular.
We have four field trips that we need approved. One is Sunday, the other, Sunday, and the others are overnight. We have Cedar Crest High School students to Penn State University, Sunday, September 28th. The girls volleyball team to attend college game. Cedar Crest High School students took Henbrook Bible Camp Friday to Saturday, November 21st and 22nd, for the varsity swim team camp. Cedar Crest High School students to Harrisburg Sheridan, Saturday to Sunday, January 31st to February 1st, for the FFA State Leadership Conference. And then Cedar Crest High School students to Penn State University, Tuesday to Thursday, June 9th to the 11th, for the FFA State competition. So those will be on next week.
And those are items that we'll have on for approval, as Hens mentioned. Any questions about any of those items? Okay, going to finance and business. We have just a couple items here, but, you know, this is something that's worth talking about because this is a reality, so I asked Mrs. Hens to put this on here, just to share some of the facts relative to Cornwall Lebanon.
Yep. As I talked about last month, Cornwall Lebanon relies about 30% of their budget on state funding, or 70 days past due on the state, so they're not providing any subsidies at this point. We missed special ed subsidy, basic ed subsidy, transportation, social security subsidies, which are equivalent to about $3.6 million. Our next subsidy is pretty significant, which would be the retirement reimbursement from April to June's quarter that we paid. So normally, we pay the retirement in full, and then we get half of it back. They did put out a notification that our next quarter that we're submitting, we only have to submit our share, we don't have to submit both to help with cash flow. But that would be our retirement for reimbursement from April to June would be another 1.8, almost $2 million. And then also, the next one by the end of September would be special ed. So dogging a decent amount. Fortunately, it is important for schools to have a fund balance for these kinds of situations that help with the cash flow. So as of right now, we're okay. If this takes longer, then it will start to impact, you know, return on investment, that kind of stuff. So at this point, we're okay.
And some of you recall, we had a similar situation, I think it was 2015, the impasse that lasted for a protracted part of the school year. So I think we can hope that that doesn't happen again. That does have a negative impact and does impact cash flow for a lot of school districts, as well as their expense, as well as what their operating is and how they function.
We will get the subsidies, it's just a matter of when. What he was referencing, it was January by the time schools got their subsidies.
Yeah. So that was some time ago, but, you know, you hear different things, and sometimes actually I always say, you know, no news is good news, because that means that people are talking, and hopefully, something comes to light quickly. So that's what we like to see, obviously, it's in everybody's benefit.
At what point are we going to be looking to sell some theater curtains to stay afloat, I guess is my question?
That...
Don't answer that.
It doesn't scratch the surface there, Mrs. Hens. Sorry to tell you that again, it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to cut it, yeah. It's not going to, it's not going to do it, yeah.
On a much serious, more serious note.
Sell some stone, yeah. Now, we're going to, we'll continue to be able to operate as we usually have this school year. Obviously, like Mrs. Hens said, subsidy payments do come through, the money is there, it's in Harrisburg. It's the question of how it's going to be dispersed amidst schools and all the other programs. That's the part right now that's being determined, so we'll be, we'll manage through this.
On a serious note, though, I do want to thank all of you for being really good financial stewards, because we have run into several things, at least in my two terms, and every time, it's like, it might be rocky, but you guys have a plan, and it, we all really just appreciate that. Thanks a lot, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One other item here, Mrs. Hens?
This is a quick one. Normally, I'm able to provide a report on the happenings of the 24-25 year during this month, but since the way the calendar falls, we're a little early on in the stages, that dust is still floating around, and try to take care of everything. We're currently working on finalizing everything. We do have auditors coming at the end of September, so we do need to have everything finalized then. So just wanted to let you know, this is normally when I provide an update on year end, but I can't right now because of how early we are meeting, so stay tuned.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hens. We'll go on to personnel, and a little lighter month than we had in August, you know, it's typical this time of year. Dr. Bosman?
Okay, for the personnel listing, the first item is accept the following resignations and retirement. Claudia Gaskell, agricultural science instructor, Cedar Crest High School, effective September 12th, 2025, due to resignation. Philip Rader, head boys tennis coach, effective June 18th, 2025, due to resignation. Renee Klein, primary assistant, Cornwall Elementary School, effective June 5th, 2025, due to resignation. Elizabeth Kishbon, primary assistant, Cornwall Elementary School, effective June 9th, 2025, due to resignation. Jelley Purnia Sosa, instructional assistant, special education ES, 6.5 hours, Cedar Crest High School, effective August 14th, 2025, due to resignation. Stephen Leiter, technology education instructor, Cedar Crest Middle School, approve the change in retirement date from October 31st, 2025, to June 13th, 2025. Ratify the following changes in employment status. Patricia Scott, from building assistant, 6.5 hours, to personal care assistant, 6.5 hours, Cedar Crest High School, at an hourly wage of $16.59, effective August 25th, 2025. Stephanie Kite, from building assistant, 5.75 hours, to building assistant, 6.5 hours, Cedar Crest High School, at an hourly wage of $15.45, effective September 3rd, 2025. Next, approve, ratify the employment of the following personnel, pending completion of pre-employment materials. Elena McHugh, mathematics instructor, Cedar Crest Middle School, at a salary of $61,280, effective August 20th, 2025. Stacy Copenhaver, agricultural science instructor, Cedar Crest High School, at a salary of $61,280, prorated based on start date, effective September 15th, 2025. Matilda Reyes, short-term substitute kindergarten instructor, Union Canal Elementary School, at a per diem of $324.23, effective September 8th, 2025. Stacy Copenhaver, future Farmers of America assistant, at a salary of $5,197. Logan Horn, assistant softball coach, at a salary of $3,930. Rachel Sparks, induction mentor for Kimberly Metzger, effective for the first semester of the 2025-2026 school year, at a salary of $450. Jordan Cruz, induction mentor for Elena McHugh, effective for the 2025-2026 school year, at a salary of $900. Philip Hausner, induction mentor for Stacy Copenhaver, effective for the 2025-2026 school year, at a salary of $900. Jennifer Mormon, instructional assistant, special education AS, 6.5 hours. Ebenezer Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $17.59, effective August 25th, 2025. Victor Mezner, instructional assistant, special education ES, 6.5 hours, Cedar Crest High School, at an hourly wage of $17.59. Sarah Barrett, personal care assistant AS, 6.5 hours, Cornwall Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $17.59. Nina La Patina, personal care assistant AS, 6.5 hours, Cornwall Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $17.59. Elizabeth Sanchez, personal care assistant AS, 6.5 hours, South Lebanon Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $17.59. Alicia Dur Carney, personal care assistant, 6.5 hours, Cornwall Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $16.59. Rebecca Gandy, kindergarten assistant, Cornwall Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $15.45. Amy Wise, kindergarten assistant, Union Canal Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $15.45. Margaret Moore, primary assistant, Cornwall Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $12.40, effective August 25th, 2025. Tamar Sullivan, primary assistant, Cornwall Elementary School, at an hourly wage of $12.40. And the last item is grant authorization to the administration to hire classified personnel to be ratified at subsequent board meetings for the 2025-2026 school year. That concludes the personnel section.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bosman. Do we have any questions about any of those items? We'll move on next to policy and management. And under policy and management, the first item that we have there is the PSBA officer election. There are a list of candidates on PSBA's website that we will need to have a recommendation to cast a vote for next week. And I believe that we have also included that information for you as attachments, so that you don't have to log in and download it, you know, just the way they have the site set up here, so we put that in there, if we want to look at that, and then, you know, we can discuss then what that recommendation would be, the officer slate, as well as the information about the officers. Okay, so we'll need to do that. What's the deadline for that? Do you have a call, Mrs. Hens?
Ooh, that's a good question. I do not know, but it's an uncontested election again this year. Trying to see if there's a deadline on there. It opens on the 20th. It's not giving when it closes. I'll have to...
Okay, we'll look and see, we'll let you know if there is. Okay. Moving on with policy and management, we have a number of policies on here. These are revised policies that are on for final adoption. These are policies that are placed on the table in August. These would be on next week's agenda for final adoption. And these are policies to be placed on the table. Again, what we're trying to do right now, we don't have any policies that require more recent legal updates, so we're trying to go back through all of the other policies that we have. Some of this is formatting, making sure that they're formatted similarly to our existing policies. Also, making sure that if there are any legal terminology and things, requirements that we have to do, probably in this one, integrated pest management, there's some things in there that we have to do that are a little bit different. Some of the other ones, a little bit also with 234, some of that governs HIPAA regulations and documentation you can and can't ask for, that type of thing. Again, policies that just need to be updated, it's been a while. No major significant changes in terms of how we practically use them, though. So those policies would be on for, to be placed on the table until October.
It looks like voting is allowed until October the 15th.
Okay, so we'll have to make sure that we do this next week. Okay. That's policy and management. Questions about any of those items? Okay. Pupil services and food services, and I believe we have just, we have one item in this section.
Just one item, asking for your approval to vote on a contract for students attending educational services through Yellow Breaches.
One of the schools that we do use for...
Yes, they attend at both, they are Frederickburg location and also Fishing Creek.
Technology and transportation, I think this is fairly simple, too.
Okay, so for transportation, for Brightville, on the attachment, contains the names of two folks to be approved. It's Bonnie Carpenter, who's listed as an aide, and then Eric Kirby, a CDL driver. So we will be looking for approval next week for those two individuals for Brightville Transportation.
I almost feel like I'm missing something because it's just a little after 6:30 here, you know? And we went through, we have all our items covered here for the agenda, but I believe that we have everything to present to the board. It is September. Obviously, we, you know, we didn't have any presentations or anything tonight either. So next week will be our regularly scheduled meeting where we will take action on these items. But are there any questions about any of the things that we have talked about, presented, or discussed this evening?
Okay, I have a question. I don't want to shake the bottle with sand in it, water. But I was thinking about this because we talked about the traffic pattern with Cornwall, and we haven't confirmed yet, but with everything going on and talking about putting a road out there, have we done a traffic pattern with the VA? And I ask that because I feel like they get out right around 3 o'clock, because I usually can't pull out because I live down the street, but from my stops, and it takes a very long time to get out, and so I was wondering if we could potentially be causing a traffic pattern? Like, can we start to look at that now in case...
You're talking about a traffic being...
If we ever do.
One of the things that we had on our proposed plan that we shared...
Yeah.
Considerable amount of time ago, we had, we shared all these plans, was having a road go behind the middle school out to Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah.
And that's what you're talking about. I don't know that we'd necessarily look at a traffic study for that, per se. I think that it would help us in many ways, one is that it gets an exit out. We can also control, though, too, in some circumstances, if we want people to enter or exit, we can have gates that close or enter and do things like that if it were to become problematic. Ultimately, I think when we've had a number of large group events, like we did even just with the football game, the band festival here, or even open house that we had earlier in the year, when we have all staff here, having another exit entrance into the campus is going to benefit us. So I think the bigger question is a matter of when can we, when can we do that?
Yeah.
You know, you're right.
And that's what I said, I don't want to, like, shake up with the water in the sand, but...
No, it's, it is something that we are looking into in terms of timelines, when something like that might be possible. Mrs. Hens, Mr. Brickley, myself, we have some meetings scheduled here over the course of the next month to explore what exactly that would involve in terms of resources and timelines.
Okay.
So we are looking into that.
Thank you.
I will tell you right now, the VA...
I will tell you right now, the VA is undergoing major, major construction projects, and so we can't get in from the State Drive side to get to our appointments. So there's a lot more traffic on Lincoln, using the Lincoln Avenue exit and entrance, because that whole, the whole--
Yeah.
--south side is completely closed, and it'll be that way for a while.
And as many of you know, too, just our, our traffic out here on Evergreen Road is very challenging, and we have a lot of things going on, on the campus here. But we are exploring that. Any other questions?
We send our police officers over to Cornwall, right, at dismissal, we have somebody there.
We have been having an officer have there at Cornwall at dismissal. One day, we had two. You know, it's always the challenge of where we, where all of our officers are deployed. It's the same issue that Cornwall Borough has as well, but we're going to be making sure that we have appropriate manpower there, you know, going forward right now. Hopefully, if we have a long-term solution here, that wouldn't be necessary, because it would be easier for everyone to follow that pattern, at least on an every single day basis, but-- Okay? Any other questions? Any questions from any one of the tenants? Okay, thank you, Maria.
One last--
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Zug, that concludes our items for tonight, and we do not have any need for executive session.
Thank you, Dr. Dymantik. Thank you, everyone, for all your reports. It's very helpful, and I really appreciate, and I know we all appreciate what you do for us and everything, and it's very great, and thank you very much for that. Like Dr. Dymantik said, we don't want to have a need for an executive session, so at this moment, I entertain a motion for adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
I have a motion adjourned in a second. We're over.